All right, awesome.
Short close coming in.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of Little Fountain School Committee on March 9th. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would consider a motion to enter into executive session under RIGL Section 4246-5A2 by way of referral.
So moved.
Holly Allen. Wait, wait a second.
My bad.
Holly Allen.
Aye.
Kevisadi.
Aye.
Nia Eir.
Aye.
Rita Kenahan.
Aye.
Mike Gertrich.
Aye.
Super.
Welcome back. We are reconvening in open session. I will notify everyone that there were no votes taken in executive session. And I would consider a motion to seven minutes of executive session. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to pull out or have a question about? Not hearing any, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Next up, Spotlight. The International Baccalaureate Program.
Can we fold in Jack McKinnon, elevate him to a panelist, Johnson?
Now here.
Maximize that screen, Johnson, if you will.
Yeah. Okay, I'm on Dr. Mitchell.
Jack.
Where do you want?
All right, so we figured we would give an update on the International Baccalaureate phase. We are in year two and we are on target for fall 2022 approval. So we're a few months behind and we can blame the P word, the pandemic, for that. And Amy Lox is here tonight. She has assumed leadership of that piece of our instructional and academic program. She is our IB program coordinator and she has hit the ground running. She's facilitating meetings every Monday. We've been in contact with Superintendent Scallion, Principal Goyette, and IB coordinator Rick Gifford at Provincetown. There may be a trip next week. Next week, the middle school in Provincetown is staging their exhibition of student work. Their capstone projects that are community service integrated. And so I've witnessed it with the fourth grader, so did Dr. Kenahan a few years ago. And so Amy may be traveling there. We've been invited next Wednesday. And we'll also have another trip at the end of the school year for staff and any school committee members who wish to go. I'm folding that into the revision of Title II. And so it will be paid for through our professional development funds. And so I think I will hand this over to Amy and Jack McKinnon. I do want to highlight the fact that Jack McKinnon has instituted a wonderful student recognition program that is predicated on the learner traits, the IB learner traits. So we're doing a full school integration and pedal to the metal. So masks are off and ideas on. Go for it.
All right. Hi, everyone. I am glad to be here this evening and to introduce myself as the International Baccalaureate Coordinator here at Wilbur McMahon. I came on board as coordinator towards the end of December and spent most of January acclimating and catching up to see where the teachers have been, where they are with their progress in their unit planning, and to see where we are as far as policies that need to be written and updated and whatnot to fit into the framework. So just basically doing a lot of learning, listening, and acclimating to where we are. As, let's see, as many of you know, I'm also the world language teacher here. I teach Spanish for grades six, seventh, and eighth as well. But tonight, my aim is to share with you just a little bit about the program, where we are in the accreditation process, and to provide a little, a brief overview of the program philosophy and how it fits into us here at Wilbur McMahon School. Right, next slide. Oops. All right. Okay, so what is IB? IB is an international educational framework. Its framework enables teachers to develop resilient, self-motivated young people who have the knowledge, the skills, and the sense of purpose they need to thrive throughout their lives and contribute to the world in making the world a better place. IB as a whole was developed in Geneva, Switzerland, oh, excuse me, as just a diploma program. But now the IB has four different programs that make up the entire organization. The one we're focusing on here at Wilbur McMahon is the MYP or the Middle Years Program. And again, that's grades six, seven, and eight. All right, so the IB essentially is a framework that focuses on learners, really developing a sense of inquiry within students and being in charge of their own learning through active inquiry-based learning activities, projects, communities, community action projects, and whatnot. And again, it works within global contexts, helping students understand different language cultures. And...
There it is.
No, hold on one second. That's okay. Okay, if you could go back to the Middle Years Program, one more. There we go. Okay, so the Middle Years Program, like I said, is where we are, grades six, seventh, and eighth. As you had mentioned, Dr. Diaz-Mitchell, that we are in the consultancy phase of the accreditation process. It's a challenging framework that encourages students to make practical connections between their studies in the real world. Twenty-five years ago, the IB introduced the Middle Years Program. And since then, over 1,200 schools have IB World Schools in 108 countries have adopted that. And Wilbur McMahon is one of a handful of schools in Rhode Island seeking that accreditation. Or I believe there are four other Rhode Island schools that have that accreditation. And then we are almost there. Um, okay.
First middle school.
The first middle school. Okay.
Middle school.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so here we have the IB in kind of a graphic form. It's pretty simple. It's a little hard to see on the inside. But if you look at the inside, you have the IB learner profile, and that's essentially the foundation of the entire program. And the learner profile fosters a distinctive set of attributes, which we'll see on the next slide. But for now, we can look at the eight subject groups that are incorporated into the program, which we already have here. However, Individuals and Societies is what is referred to as the Social Studies Program. And Language Acquisition for us would be the Spanish World Language Program. So there are a total of eight subject matters that are tied in. The arts includes, for us here at Wilbur, the music, music classes, the band classes, and also the art classes. So that is tied into one category. Okay, go ahead. All right, so this is the IB learner profile. Again, it's the foundation and the basis of the whole program, whose aim is to develop internationally-minded people, recognizing their common humanity and shared guardianship to the planet. So it's quite a wonderful premise. And through these different words and concepts, students can really begin to understand why we're learning what we're doing, how we can actively participate in our learning, how what we're learning can impact us in the future and the world in the future. So it's really quite an amazing thing. All right, next slide. Okay, so this is the mission statement for IB. I bring this to you because one of the things that we are working on... So we can actually go past that one. I just wanted to show it. So the progress that we have made. So January, like I said, I came on board in December throughout January. That was a catch-up phase for me. And we did some, the teachers were very helpful in sharing their unit plans with me as they had them, they've been building upon them since March of 2020, which is when our consultancy phase, I'm sorry, in 2020. And then March of 2020 is when many of the teachers went to that official training.
For full weekend.
Yes. And then when COVID shut everything down in person, many teachers stepped up to the plate and did a rigorous online version of that training at the very beginning, when online Zooms and whatnot were quite a novel concept to us in the capacity that they are now. And they did really well. They learned a lot, and they have brought that back. And they have been sharing with me exactly what the unit plan piece of the IB program is essentially, which we can get into a little bit later. Okay, so, all right, so we have January, February. That is when, as you had mentioned earlier, we incorporated the learner profile attributes to reflect our Student of the Month. Last month's attribute was caring, and this month's attribute is reflective. So those are really great traits for us to have. And the reflective one, I just want to share with you. It's, we thoughtfully consider the world and our own ideas and experience. We work to understand strengths and weaknesses in order to support our learning and personal development. So these are the learner attributes that are posted in every classroom. There's a few behind you there. And so in addition to kids seeing it all the time, we have really started to speak about it more. Our media specialist has been trained in IB. So she's starting in the younger grades, introducing these concepts. We have a teacher in fifth grade who has completed the training, although fifth grade is not part of the IB program. So, so students are, while they begin in grade six, we really incorporate it early on as far as introducing them to the concepts, the overall philosophy, and whatnot. Okay, in March, I will be collaborating with our school's social worker and counselor, Mary Elizabeth Miller. We will be coming up with plans as far as implementing IB into some advisory periods for the kids so that they are fully aware, when we mention these words, what they mean, why we're talking about them, why is it important, and really having them come to their own realizations as to what those words mean to them. So that's what we'll be doing for advisory. We'll also meet... So that's what we'll be doing for advisory. We'll also meet Principal McKinnon and I are meeting with the SIT team, the School Improvement Team in April to collaborate on a mission statement to integrate some of the IB philosophy and terminology, which is a requirement for the IB program. In addition to a, an academic honesty policy and a grading rubric, because the IB uses its own specific rubric for certain community based projects. Okay, so then if you get to June, we're really getting close. Oh, I'm sorry, the ongoing unit planning for April. So that is something that has been ongoing. You may have heard that we're unit planning, we're unit planning. This is a very intensive process. It takes a lot of time, a lot of collaboration, a lot of conversation goes into making these units. So it has taken us a while, but we are, they're good units and we're really happy to implement them in the fall. And one of the great things about IB is that it's very, it promotes a lot of interdisciplinary collaboration. So there are plans for the Phys Ed Department to work with the Spanish teacher. Well, that's myself. And, and the Individuals and Societies, they have a unit that they are already doing that's IB and we're going to tie that into a few other subject areas. So there's a lot of good things coming with this. In June, we have our evaluation visit. That is where Nicole Jones from the IB organization comes to check in with our progress, see what we're doing, see the areas we can have some improvement. And then after that, we have couple of months to tie up those loose ends if there's any areas that we can improve on. And then in September, we have the final visit. And then after that final visit, we hope the accreditation comes in fall, October, I believe. So.
Thank you so much.
We're very welcome.
Thank you. So when I said she hit the ground running, I meant it.
Great stuff.
Thank you.
I meant it. And so it's going to be fully integrated across our middle school, our Middle Years Program. Parents have been saying for years, the feedback has been, oh, my middle school kid has lost his, her, or their, you know, love of school. And it's part of adolescence. And this just sort of grabs kids and leverages their imaginations, their energy, their natural compassion and care for each other and their community and their world. So it is a wonderful fit for this school. We had, you know, a two year sort of disruption from P word and the pandemic, but we're on a roll now. So.
I think so.
You so much.
I'm very excited. I was part of the first group to go down to
Okay.
Provincetown School.
Yep.
Kind of went reluctantly. I was like blown away. We got to see their capstone projects.
Right.
And I got paired up with a young person who loved horses.
Okay.
So they did their report on a local horse farm and they volunteered their time. And from there though, their project then went global and they were researching tribes from another country that ate horse meat. And this kid was kind of mortified, but then found tribes that just ate root vegetables. And they were like sharing all this like international information that they had gathered from just volunteering at a local horse farm, you know, so.
Yeah.
And they did, we got to visit the art room and see how they pulled that in. Their IT director had for someone else's project had created a Minecraft room where kids could do math problems. Like I was just blown away by their, their whole.
Yeah.
System. Yeah.
Yeah. And the fact that they are mostly student led projects is really kind of remarkable because it just kind of takes the, some of the boundaries that we would have without the IB mentality where like you're starting at the project and you're going back to the origin. So starting, the product is the horse farm in your situation. You go back. Why, 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 why? And then you're in the other country talking about the horses and.
Yep.
So.
And the kids. They were like really excited about it. It wasn't just like, well, I have to do. They were really excited.
Great.
If I may, when, when we went, we also Newport County Regional Special Administration came with us too. They were blown away. But I, I watched middle schoolers make their own guitars. Kids. I watched the fourth grade capstone projects and they were just beyond anything I would have imagined.
Right.
A year old could do.
Yeah, if I could. One project that jumps out to me was the waste of food in the school.
Yes.
Yes. And it was very graphic.
Yes, it was graphic.
They made it. They described it, but they came up with measures to affect the waste. And so I was, that's what impressed me too, but yeah, great work. It excites kids. It excites them.
So I could just one thing I'd like to say before you came on and before Jack came on prior, we used to have Mr. Tomaso incorporated some of the benefits of this program and he got to report back to us.
Okay.
And so then the previous Spanish teacher.
Miss Cole.
Cole did. So that would be one thing that's very important to me to be actually, to be able to hear it from the teachers, how they're actually incorporating their program into within their studies to come back so that we can hear from them. And so the parents can hear from how basically, if we're going to be putting all this effort into it, just so that they can start to hear about it now, which would be nice.
For the teachers to hear about it or for the students?
For us to hear about it as a.
Parents, I see.
As well, as well as the parents and it, and they came and it wasn't very elaborate, but it was just, they may have reported back to us two or three times. It wasn't a lot, but it was something, it was nice to be able to hear how they're incorporating this program into their studies.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would love to, absolutely.
Maybe quarterly or something like that. Such an exciting program. And just look at the kids when they do their science fair projects, which is all based. And each one chooses some sort of a community component. There are a lot about litter on the beaches in town, et cetera. And so we basically have the underpinnings already of a capstone year.
And one of the, one of, you know, Mr. Roger, when you were talking, one of the things that I thought of just then is that I absolutely, I would love to share what we're doing with our units and whatnot, but if you're trying to get, have a reference point, think about what the sixth grade used to do with Egypt and I and like those larger like collaborations, just really putting in like a global world frame to anything we're doing. So IB is in its own curriculum. It's, we're using our current curriculum, but we're aligning the framework, we're integrating that framework into those current curriculums. So we're not changing the curriculums as they stand. We are just like enhancing them. We're adding to them. So the changes may not be major. Some of them might be a matter of, you know, different words, for example, individuals and societies as opposed to social studies. So some changes are minor. Some are larger and we can absolutely share as we go forward.
I think any part of it, just whether it's small or big is
It's exciting.
Feedback is, is key.
Right.
Thank you. I do see a hand in the audience and I know why. You could let him in. Mr. McHugh, you have three minutes and we need your name and address, please.
Should be able to join now, Patrick.
Oh, you disappear?
He's in a Chromebook. He's, he'll pop up. There he is.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
I'm going to try to do this in three minutes and if I run over, I hope you let me.
No exceptions.
No, come on. Lori Dye especially excites me so much to hear you talk about IB and all the conversations and hours we had talking about it. I just want to let the committee know and whoever's listening, how this came to be and the strategy of it. It's a two step strategy. First was our audit district tuition was first part. And second is to get to brand our school and to get into the IB program so we can attract students because of declining enrollment. And the third part of it is getting to town and, and right now the town is starting to change their housing and zoning thoughts here. So this is part of the big plan to get kids in our school. You know, once we get accredited, you know, it's going to be busting kids in from nearby Massachusetts and nearby Rhode Island. The Barringtons, the Bristols, the Warrens, the Porters, the Middletowns, and Newports. And over there in Westport and Dartmouth, people are going to want to come here. And we need to brand our school. We'll be the first public school with IB in Rhode Island in the middle years. And we have a $15,000 budget with an advertising program, which Dr. Mitchell knows well about and has a plan for it. And I hope we have another $15,000 in the budget this year. So, you know, it's going to take the principal and it's going to take the superintendent to drive this bus. Everyone we've talked to, and I say we, Dr. Mitchell, we talked to at proud and other schools that have IB. It has to come from the principal. It has to come from the superintendent. They have to drive this. They have to get the teachers motivated to make this happen. And it excites me, what drew me to Dr. Mitchell was her excitement for it and how she can drive it. So it's important that the teachers are on board, that the faculty is on board. And I'm also excited that you're going to make two more trips. It'll be good to get Jack down to Provincetown to see that like you all have seen it. I do have one quick question. After we get accredited in 2022, what is the plan moving forward after that?
Madame Chan?
Second, is that the last thing you want to say?
Yeah, that's the last thing I can say.
The plan, Patrick, is to consider folding it into our elementary level and that is the PYP.
Awesome.
That is all the end up.
All right. Great. Exciting news.
Very exciting.
Great job, Amy. All right.
Next up is Superintendent's report.
Not much to say. That spotlight said it all, but we are also upgrading our curriculum in other areas. We are working with Natalie Eliasen from EBEC on our science curriculum. She's been on site quite a bit and we will continue with that this year and next year. So that we are fully aligned with the next generation of science standards and science assessment. In PE and health, we have had Karen McAvoy and Judy Squires working with Jay Ford and Noel Kieran. And so that is getting a full overhaul of PE and health. And IB is being integrated into those areas and Natalie Eliasen has found with science, so many IB elements already. I think she has spoken to you. And so we have a lot of great things going on here at Wilbur McMahon. Everything is moving forward and moving up. And onward to the next agenda item. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you.
Good.
Next up, finance report, Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have the financial statements for the eight months ended February 28th. And at this point, we're looking at a projection of about break even for FY '22. We're seeing some savings in our audit district tuition in the special education side. We had a little bit of an increase, obviously, in salaries and wages as a result of some, some changes in administration. But we seem to be on target with some of those items, especially when we're looking at substitutes. That's a line item that sometimes can impact the, the overall budget. So we're still looking at about $130,000 for the year, which is, you know, considerably higher than where we're at free pandemic. So but we're hoping that we can see a little bit of savings in that area as we move forward. Really, there are no other areas that we're really have some concerns on, on the, on the budget side. At this point, everything's been pretty much in line with the budget. We do have a little bit of an increase in some of our property expenses. We've incurred some expenses relative to the file on that we had to, to spend some money on, but I think overall we, we seem to be well positioned on the budget to hopefully I say break even, but I'm hoping that maybe we can have a little bit of a surplus as we move into FY '23.
Miracle.
We do have a carryover accumulated surplus from the audit report. So we are looking at a 200 and excuse me, we're looking at $276,000 of accumulated surplus as we move into the FY '22 year from FY '21. So those numbers are in the books and I think we did well to get to that point. So I am.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McNamee? Next up, committee reports. We have no policy subcommittee report. Who said that? Town recreation. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm scooting right by Portsmouth.
Thank you. The Portsmouth School Committee met last night. They went over a variety of different things, exciting stuff happening in Portsmouth as well. Kind of on the subject of IB, there are a lot of exciting community service projects happening at Portsmouth High School. They just finished up a drive for feminine hygiene, hygiene products that I talked about last month. They're raising money for their former assistant principal, Mary Saladino's son, who at birth was diagnosed with a rare neurological disease. They've been doing a few different fundraisers that will benefit the cost of treatment for, for her son. Last week, the Portsmouth High School Project Closeup Group spent the week in DC as part of Project Closeup's Government Immersion Program. I have to give them a shout out because I am an alumni of that program. Clearly it made an impact on me. It was very exciting too, to see the pictures of the group with many of our members of Congress that are serving at the federal level. Portsmouth is also celebrating Wellness Week as we are here. There's a big dodgeball tournament at Portsmouth High School Thursday at 6:00 PM. That's being highly anticipated. It's a fun event. Teachers play against each other. It's returning this year and then like us in Little Compton, Portsmouth also has a professional development and distance learning day on Monday for those of you in the audience who have Portsmouth High School students. So thank you.
Thank you. Now, Town Recreation Committee liaison.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, awesome.
So we are still waiting on approval for the grant for lighting at the tennis courts. Waited, waiting patiently, but very exciting. We have also submitted a proposal to town council for some funding to improve the shed at the baseball Willie Field.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it needs a little work. So we have a group who've offered to do the work for no cost. Just materials. So we're going to split that with the town. So excited about that. But I think the most gratifying piece of my work with the red committee is I'm working with Mr. McGregor himself.
To develop a sign for dedicating the fields.
Yeah. So let me tell you, I'm working with Mr. Mac. Yeah, so that's what we're doing.
Nice.
Man, the myth, the legend.
Legend.
Next up is the Wellness Committee.
Yeah, back to me. And so Wellness Week, do we have an update on Wellness Week from anyone or?
I'm in red. Today was. I'm in red. Today was colored red, even though I'm a vegetarian. This was, I think, for the protein. Okay, then someone gave me misinformation. Wait a minute, I do not want to represent that. Maybe Beyond Burgers, but that was that's it. So Wellness Week is this week and we all love it. It's, the kids have their own activities and themes and then so does the staff. And so I'm drinking right now some water infused with pineapple and orange. And yesterday it was another fruit medley with some herbs grown here in our greenhouse. Also, there's Dove chocolates everywhere, which is my weakness.
I think that's against our wellness policy.
I think it's everything in moderation. And yes, they gratitude journals, all staff got gratitude journals. Kids are getting all kinds of swag all week. The teachers get free salads all week. And yesterday, they also got free tacos. Thank you, Mr. McNamee. The Indian voices will be headed your way. It's just been so much fun. And to see the kids, yesterday, it was all the kids were in green. They looked like, you know. I wasn't here Monday. I'm right here on Mondays, but it's a lot of fun. We'll have more of an update at the next meeting when all of the activities are finished. But this year, it is so, it's always well organized. This year, it's I don't know, it's gone to a next level. It's gone to the next level with the offerings and, you know, a lot of mindfulness. So yeah, we'll have a better report after the fact.
But we've appreciated getting the updates on Perrin Square and updates on what's been happening.
A lot of fun.
Sounds like a great one. We'll get a recap at the next meeting. The recent Rhode Island Healthy Schools newsletter just went out and I hope everybody received a copy of that. If you're interested, anybody in the audience is interested in the Rhode Island Healthy Schools newsletter, please let us know and we'll get you a copy of that. They do a lot of great programming through there. And we have a wellness meeting coming up in March. Twenty seventh. And I would, and I would, twenty second, twenty, March 22nd at?
3:30.
3:30. And I would, I would just implore any of you who are interested, anybody in the audience want to know about wellness and health in the school, please join our meeting. You can still join on Zoom. So we'll be in person, but really encourage you to get involved. There's so much going on and so much we can be doing. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Rita. Discussion items, discussion about high school request for proposal process. Lori, do you want to start the conversation?
I think John and I could tag team this perhaps. The RFP was written last year and so was the rubric that is aligned to all of the standards of for high school accreditation, NEASC. And so really nothing new, a new timeline, of course. We would like to get it out as soon as possible. This impacts our budget over the next several years. I think we have a really good RFP. I've never written one before for an entire academic program. But using, John had definitely made a great suggestion. He said, Lori, make it sort of standards driven, you know, and that was easy for me. I've been in several NEASC teams. I've led many standards as well. I've been all over New England. So I think we have a solid RFP, which is the smallest part of the process. And we have a timeline that ends in April, the end of April. And then we'll have a few months during the school year to start scoring. We have a 33-page rubric. It looks, it's longer than it really is. I just fleshed out every standard. I did use the power standards. I didn't use all of them, but I used those that are the most powerful, have the most impact on our kids. And you for the uninitiated, let's see, learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support, learning resources. And these are the NEASC standards, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And they rolled them out in 2020, right at the P word, right at the beginning of the pandemic. And so, you know, things have been a little bit disrupted there, but I think they're the best standards that NEASC has ever generated and held schools accountable to. So we're pretty excited. It'll go out to all schools within 20 miles, maybe even some Massachusetts schools. We'll just push it out to schools within 20 miles and see where that lands. It's not unusual for a state, for a district to cross state lines. It's done. I know of one Hampshire district that they send their kids to high school in Massachusetts, things. John, do you want to add anything?
I think the rubric will be such that, and this is done a lot at the state level, is that it's not strictly fee-driven. So as you can see from the superintendent's review of the RFP, there's a lot of it is going to be obviously educational driven. So generally, 30% of the rubric would be fee-based. So that depending on, and generally what happens in bids like this is you get the qualifications in one RFP. And then the fees would be in a second one. Those fees then would just be open once we determined probably the three finalists for selection. So we narrow it down to three. And at that point, we'll probably more than likely have public meetings with those three. And we'll have also the fees at that point in time. So, but we'll rank them according to the rubric. So it's I think it's a good process. It seems like a fair process. There was some concerns in terms of the time and the length of the time for the contract, but I think Johnny Anderson's got some wording in, which provides us with multiple options. So what we will probably more than likely have is when they respond to those, we'll have them bid on the initial contract. For the option years as well, too, so that we'll have a cost would be out.
Why? Because of state procurement laws. He gave us some really good language.
It's a multi, it's more like a 10-year contract. It's not something we want to do every four or five years. It just, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. The last contract was a 10-year one.
Don't do that anymore. So it'll be three, three and three and one. I do have to tweak the rubric still, but it's just a draft. The point system.
John, you want to add something to this?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to jump in on the comments that were just made relative to the 10-year contract versus a three-year contract. Lori and John are correct. State law essentially does not allow for a municipality to enter into a contract for longer than three years. That's generally speaking, the length of time, the maximum length of time that an entity such as a school committee could enter into a contract. However, the workaround is these rollover years, so long as a committee is allowed to express its interest in continuing that contract every three years. You could do two years or a one-year extension. It will amount to, as John pointed out, 10 years, as long as that is continuous. But you do have, the way that that RFP is written, it does allow for those breaks. And that essentially is there to comply with state law.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks so much.
Questions?
Sure. So the three-year rollovers, is that automatic? Would be my first question. And then the second question would be as far as the we would require that we know what years four through six would be and seven through nine and 10 at this point?
We'll request that in the proposal, right? We'll request that it be provided for that. Some may say, you know, we'll go out and we'll add a inflation factor, you know, they'll have to put that number together as to how they want to bid it. But what you want to take a look at is you probably don't want them to, after, let's say, a year, after the third year, well, let's renegotiate the fee.
And that's a concern of mine.
Well, it could be a concern, but well, obviously, we'll have numbers, so, you know. Realistically, I don't, we're never going to get the contract that we got with Portsmouth going forward. I think we have to realize that we'll have to be looking at something that's more, it's closer to market at this point in time. You do, you could have districts that may want to low-ball it to get into the district and then, you know, have tuitions go up. So, you know, you want to favor those up in the contract as well, too.
So I would have to look over what John wrote again, but that would be I guess I'm going beyond the three years because one through three is not very appealing to me. So I'm curious to beyond that for, so.
We'll request those numbers in the proposal.
But how would that work going forward as far as, at the end of the three years? Would that be, do we automatically roll that over if we just, I mean?
To the committee, but, you know, it would be more than likely would be an order of act unless there were some issues that came up, it would be an automatic renewal.
Some, some of the language could include, I think I sent you something to that effect. In the third year, by November 1st, if neither party has blah, 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 you know. That's what Jamestown does with theirs, with North Kingstown and Narragansett. They have two districts that they have contracts with. So something like that. If in the third year, neither party.
There's some language that if both parties are happy, it just continues. But if one, one party has an issue, it can come to the table and be reviewed.
I know I've shared that.
Yep, yep.
And I think the whole per pupil cost number has to be looked at in the process, too. So you know, those numbers continually go up. So, but unfortunately, that's that's what we're dealing with. We don't have high schools, so.
And there's no issues with us doing three-year extensions?
This area is kind of, when you look at, for example, net metering arrangements with green energy contracts that municipalities enter into. These are longer than three years. So there is, like what Sean says, there are contracts out there that municipalities enter into that are more than, greater than three years. So and realistically, something like this, you're not going to enter into a three-year contract when we're talking about, you know, looking at a long-term a spot for these kids. I mean, you're just not going to do it every three years. It just doesn't, it's not fair to them. It's not fair to the school that's going to be bidding on it. So, but there are protections in there, obviously, if something doesn't work out, that you can, you know, you can move it. But ideally, what we'll be looking at is, is something that will get pricing in that 10-year range, what we do, what we do submit it. I mean, they could refuse to provide that pricing, but then, you know, we'd have to make a decision at that point whether they're in or they're out of the running.
Yeah, ultimate timeline to have this wrapped up.
I think what we were looking at was probably having it to the, to the school committee by the June meeting.
We won't be sleeping, but it's that important.
All right. I understand that. And my concern is that the summer months, schools close. And if we want parents to get into schools to see them, and the schools are closed, that's an issue. And, and I expressed this to Polly, was that in the fall, when we have there's an election next year in November, we don't know who's going to be here, who's not going to be here this year, I'm sorry. And then you have the budget season coming up that typically starts in January and February. And we need to plan for 20, the beginning of '24. So to me, it's almost like we need to get this done now. And I think I for that multiple times, and I just want to make sure that we don't miss opportunities. That's all.
You guys are the decision makers.
I agree. Community engagement is absolutely integral to the process. That is what is driving us, the community engagement factor.
Yeah. Next discussion item is about the draft. School calendar for '22, '23.
Okay, it is not ready. It's just so late in the game that Ride shared February 25th. The sort of kind, the sort of kind of statewide calendar for next year. It's not as prescriptive at all as the last few years have been. There's one common state, there's one statewide PD Day, Distance Learning Day. That's the only one that can count towards the 180. And I work with Tom Kenworthy on this, of course. He sent me his draft late last week because we've only had the state one for a week. And he is still sort of firming that up. Hannah, were you, yeah. So he and I going back and forth. But we do want to push out soon enough, the days of December holiday break and February break and April break. And so I did want to, you know, just tell the stakeholders, we're not holding this up. The state was a little bit late and we're all collaborating. It looks like we will be in sync with Portsmouth, pretty much, maybe one or two days will be different. There's no getting around that. Because they are using some days for processes that do not apply to us. And I'll discuss that when we firm up our final draft. I think we're good. Tom and I touched base again today. So it does look like we're starting at the end of August. We are starting before Labor Day, everybody. And so we do want to share it with our two collectives, Little Compton Teachers Association, also Little Compton Employee Support Union. And you know, get their take on it. But we will be starting before Labor Day and hopefully no snow days to make up. We will likely end June 16th. That'll be our 180th day. So we're almost there, but like Portsmouth and the rest of the state, we're not quite there yet. We've been really mindful and thoughtful. But if any parents want to know about the patients, just give me a buzz.
If I might, I do know of other school districts that put their calendar out and they're changing it. Or getting changes. So we're going to be patient.
We're going to be patient and yeah.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Next up on the agenda, public input. I don't know if anyone has any comments.
Shall I? Patrick McHugh will bring you in and you can state your name and address, since I don't think you did before. And then you can tell us about how everybody packed the gym.
That's so funny. That's so funny. Patrick McHugh, 231 John Dyer wrote.
That's so funny. That's so funny. Patrick McHugh, two thirty-one, John Dyar wrote. To let the school committee know, you know, you're part of the only school committee that I can recall that has a plan for declining enrollment with the IB strategy. So I want to commend you folks on that. It's so important. If we don't get kids in the seats, you're not going to have a school. You're not going to have a committee to be on. We're not going to have teachers and we send our kids out. So, you know, there's a lot of noise that goes on in school committees all over this country. Year after year after year. The most important thing is to brand this school and get a strategy to get kids in the seats or there will be no school in this town. And people will live in a town with no school and what that would be like. So it's really, really important that you guys keep your eye on the ball on this. And I think it's also important that we have two local people that are, are leaders in, in Lori Dice Mitchell over in Westport and Jack Lizzy Little Compton, who realize how important Wilbur School is to the town of Little Compton. So try to cut through the noise and remember, at the end of the day, there may not be a school here if you guys don't stick to a strategy to bring kids in. And secondly, about the school, the Wilbur School going out for an RFP, since nineteen seventy-eight, there's been three RFPs. And they filled the gym three times in that period where folks from town could give their opinions on what school they want their kids to go to high school. Historically, it's been Portsmouth, Tyrrhenon, Middletown. So I will be sitting there as a Jonathan when the gym is filled, when they give a presentation. Thank you and have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, Patrick.
One more hand up. It looks like Sarah Pacico-Lovek, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Sarah Pacico, One Peckham Road. I second everything that Mr. McHugh said, just in the interest of high school specifically. You know, I know that it's not quite time to voice public opinion on it as you don't have your top three schools, but you know, some of the arguments that or discussions, you know, when, when you get calculations for the cost of high school, some schools look at what it costs for a child per district and other schools look at what it costs for a child just to go to high school. Having said that though, you know, when I think about the kids in Portsmouth High School, if you had, or any high school, if you have four English classes and you have a cap of twenty-five kids and every English class has twenty, twenty-one kids, we're only contributing two or three more kids. So most of the money that we contribute to a high school is probably extra money that they have anyway. Personally, you know, I really appreciate that you mentioned the community because having been in the second year of the contract through Portsmouth, it took over one full contract. And I think Ms. Ayat can attest to this before Portsmouth considered us part of the community. So to go back to three-year contracts, I think would just be detrimental to families and kids because now our kids, even our young ones, are integrated into the community through youth sports. You know, and other programs and they're meeting friends that they'll someday go to high school with, hopefully. Personally, you know, I went to Middletown High School. It was a great school when I went there, but it was a long drive and you didn't come home and you have, as Ms. Allen probably say as well, you have adopted families that took you in because if you did play a sport and it was a seven o'clock at night practice, you didn't have time to come home and go back. I have had kid, my fourth child going through Portsmouth High School right now. I have my third one going into college. All three had a tremendous education there and are very successful at the college level. And I just, you know, when it comes time to fill that gym, I hope that you consider staying in Portsmouth for how well it does on its scores and how well it prepares the kids for life and for college. So I guess that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for all that you do and I appreciate your listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Got your hands.
Okay. Awesome. Next up, action items, consider discuss, vote to approve any requests for information from administration and or legal counsel? Anybody?
I have a question on that. So if I want to put I don't know if it's really a request from administrative legal counsel, but I would like to see us expand our communications to our homeschool kids and beyond in hoping that we can attract some of them to come back to our school by letting them know what's going on as far as what is actually happening with the school. Because we did lose some kids and I'd like to see we can bring them back. And that was my, my thing with the parent square as far as communications. I want to get, I want to get it out to them, whether, however we do it. You know, things that are going on within our school. So I'm not sure how we should handle that. If that needs to go on a separate agenda or?
So as I sent an email, how we use Parent Square would not be a school committee discussion. And, but I do know Parent Square is used for in-house families that are already here. And that would be a more social media, newspaper, townwide information rather than Parent Square.
Yeah. What about the school website? There's an opportunity for information there, maybe.
I was just thinking about as far as email blasts. I mean, if we're doing email blast to other parents, was, if we could add them to it.
It's, it's not done anywhere that I, I know of. It's an intriguing concept. And we do have homeschool kiddos who are partially enrolled, which means they are getting our blasts. We did have a glitch and Mr. Gabriel did catch that. And so but we do have students engaged in some of our co-curriculars. We have students engaged in some of our extracurriculars. And so they do get, they have access to Parent Square passively and also they can log in and they can also receive messages. In terms of all of our homeschool families, some, some families have been homeschooling for decades and generations and they don't generally, this is just so many, they're not a monolith. Our homeschool families come in many shapes and sizes. And so not a monolith at all. So we wouldn't want to blast out messaging to all of them. But those who are interested, we do have a liaison on site and who reaches out to them at least annually and is always accessible. And that's Mary Elizabeth Miller. Is our homeschool, home instruction liaison. She's very good at it. And all the parents know to call her when they want the kids to matriculate into an academic course or two, or co-curricular course or two, or band, or athletics, et cetera. So I think we have more communication than most districts do when it comes to our kids who are engaging in home instruction with their families. But it is something to take into consideration. We could have a higher profile, I think, on social media. And it's something I'll be meeting with staff about and the new principal.
Since this isn't a agenda item, that I suggest that maybe as part of your our Friday night memo to us, might you just include some ways that the community concurrently get information about so that
Absolutely.
lay our papers on them and consider them?
Yeah, thank you. And I do have a little bit more leeway not being on the school committee in terms of answering questions.
Yes, no, no, I know. But before we got into a discussion about it.
I totally agree.
That way we can see all the opportunities that
There are many.
Members, that someone considering moving to Little Compton, those type of people that, that want information about the school.
Yeah, I think we do a good job. We could always do a better job. So yeah. What's that?
I have an idea or two that might.
Awesome. Jonathan and I have been talking about it, but.
I don't believe that this requires legal counsel, but I would like us to consider maybe adding a moment of silence at the opening of our meetings. Just for peace in a war-torn world. Okay. Um, sure. I will, I will speak to the person who sets the agendas up and see if she can stick that right in the document.
Thank you.
All right. Lastly, I will consider a motion to a John.
So moved. Second.
All right. Anyone a pause? Action carries. Good night, everyone.